I'd like to call this meeting to order. Sorry for the delay. Anyway. Art, Anu, and Theranese.
Trustee Acosta? Trustee Estrada?
Here.
Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Sanchez? Trustee Van Allen?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Roth?
Here. We have a forum. It was your request by Ed Acosta to join our meeting.
We have not received any requests under 2449.
And Board Member Abel Sanchez will not be able to make traveling. Dr. Spa, if you would lead us once again.
If you are able to send, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, do we have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those. Public comment, this is the opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items outside the agenda. The board president will recognize any member relate, any, each speaker may speak up to three minutes unless otherwise limited or extended by the president. The president may also allow time for those wishing to speak, but no action will be taken on matters presented. If appropriate, the president or any member of the board may direct that a matter be referred to the superintendent's office for placement on a future agenda. Okay, now, very exciting, our next item, and that is swear, the swearing in.
President Roth, there are no public comments. I just wanted to let you know, there's no request for public comments.
I didn't see, okay. You really want this? Okay. Sorry about that. I just, okay, I'm not going to explain myself. I made a mistake. Now, moving on to the swearing in of Ruben Marcus, SoCal High School. He will be sworn in as a student rep to the board. Eris, do you want to get from here?
Thank you so much, President Roth. I'd like to ask Ruben Marcus to join me up here for our swearing in ceremony. And before, before we do this, I, I got to meet with, with Ruben just a few days ago to talk a little bit about, about this important role that he's taking on as a, as a student trustee. And we talked about the, how the power of the people really lives through this board, and how the voice of the people really lives through this board when it comes to advocating for, for our children and our students in our educational system. And I think it's especially, it's especially a proud moment for me when we select a student to be the voice of students, especially in a system that's dedicated to serving those, those, our K-12 young people, and, and having a student who will be that voice, who can help guide you in your decisions as you're making important decisions on behalf of students and on behalf of the County Office of Education. And so, I've, so inspired by, by Ruben's dedication and commitment. You got to see Ruben in the, in the last board meeting as, as one of many wonderful students who participated in the, in this election process. And it's really an honor for me to be able to ask Ruben to, to be sworn in as your student trustee. Ruben, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. And now, we're going to ask Ruben Marcus to join us on the dais. And I want to thank Ms. Valentin, who already ordered a name plaque for Ruben. He'll be sitting right over here. I don't know if any board members have any comments for Ruben, as he joins us here on the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Look forward to hearing your perspective on all of these things.
Thank you, I look forward to sharing them.
Yes, the microphone is important. I get called on it all the time. Anyway, welcome, and I look forward to serving with you this year.
Yeah, thank you, likewise.
Okay. Next to the consent agenda, and do I have an emotion to accept or defer any from it?
I'll move unless anybody has something they want to defer.
Is there a second? This is going to be your first vote, Ruben. How do you vote on this acceptance of the consent agenda?
I vote yes.
Rest of the board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does the motion pass? Correspondents, Theranese say?
No correspondence for the board.
Thank you. Onto new business. And now, we are going into another exciting moment where we will be interviewing a second or a student board member for this current board, 2425. And so, we all have a gray folder.
Perhaps I can walk us through this process? Thank you, President Roth. So, if you recall, at the last, at the last board meeting, we had several students who were applied to be students at large, students from any county high school in Santa Cruz County, I suppose. And, but your task to us since the beginning of, of this election of a student trustee representative was, was to have a student also from one of our alternative education schools. And that has been more of a challenge than we had hoped, but we are really excited because this year we have one student who is in our Oasis School, who is applying to be the representative for the alternative education programs from one of our schools. And so, your task today is to do a similar interview as you did last, last meeting, where you interviewed several students. So, we're going to be asking the same questions, and, and then you'll make a determination if the student applicant would make a good representative for the alternative education program and to also join us here. So, for the first time in our history, we will have two student representatives here if you approve this, this young person who's going to be participating in the interview. So, if I could walk you through the packet, you will see, if you open the gray folder, two, on the two sides, on the right side you have the application for Natalie Hopkins, who is a 12th grader at Oasis School. And on the left side, you will see the five questions that we asked our students last meeting, that we hope to ask Natalie for this meeting. In this process, we're going to ask in just a moment, when you're ready, for Natalie to join us in the front. President Roth?
We can't have our new board member be the first?
Oh, that's a great idea. Yes, absolutely.
Let's put him on the hot seat right away.
Absolutely, well, we could have student trustee Marcus, yeah, Marcus, student trustee Marcus, and to, to ask the first question, and then we can go down the line and ask questions. And then, we would ask the student to step into conference room for you to deliberate and make a decision. Decision is made. All right, so we're going to ask Natalie to please join us, and please take a seat. Welcome, we're going to get you a microphone. Thank you so much for being here, Natalie.
Thank you.
Can you speak into the microphone, Natalie?
Hello?
I'm going to ask her, Natalie, sure, Natalie, please tell us, sorry, I thought, I was thinking of the, okay, I'm discombobulated, okay. Ruben?
All right. Please tell us why you're interested in serving as a student trustee on the County Board of Education, and briefly describe your background and experience in education and student advocacy.
So, my main reason I want to be a student trustee is, I feel like not enough students' voices are heard, especially in alternative education. I personally had not the best experience over at Aptos High, and switching over to alternative ed, I felt like not a lot of my needs were met, like I wasn't being pushed hard enough. So, that's like my main reason. By far as leadership, I was in ASB for my first two years at Aptos High, and this would be like my first experience for like advocacy, but I am very passionate about making change for things that need to be looked at.
Thank you. Now, question two. Please provide an example of a specific initiative or project you would like to work on as a student trustee, and why that's important to you.
So, I've already talked to the teachers and staff at my school about this, but I would like to create Google Forms and surveys for students to fill out when they go in for like their weekly meetings with their teachers, just to get like a better understanding of like what needs to be spoken about, and like have a chance to get other students' input, and not just like based on my personal experience.
Question number three, how do you envision advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and we would add belonging, in our county's education system? And what steps would you take to ensure all students have equal access to?
Well, I would try my best to advocate for, or educate more students about resources, and then also have like more reliable resources, mainly for like mental health and stuff, because I feel like there are resources at schools, but they aren't very, they're not like always there, like there. But, and then also like passing on information about events and things that might be happening to other schools in like PVUSD, and, yeah, and then creating like a system like the Google Forms and the surveys to get like families' input, and just like a place for everybody to provide feedback.
Hi Natalie, thank you for being here, thank you for applying. We know how challenging this can be in front of people, and being on front of a panel, so thank you for being here. How would you gather input, feedback, from your fellow students to ensure their voices are represented on the board?
Well, kind of just like that same thing with the surveys, and at my school, everybody, every student goes in for a weekly meeting with their teacher, so just like during that meeting, the teachers would just have the students fill out like a two to three minute little survey, and then I could just get.
Thank you. And so, the final question that we have prepared is, can you share an example of a challenging situation you faced in a leadership role, and how you handled it?
Well, like I said, this would be like my first kind of bigger leadership role, but I mean, at work, there would be a lot of, I don't really have like, I don't know, this would be like my first big.
So, you mentioned, you know, something you would have to handle at work?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're employed, so give us an example of how you handle something challenging at work?
Um, well, just like angry customers, I'm a hostess at the hideout, so reservations and wait lists, sometimes people don't really get happy about that, but just like try to talk to them and give them other options that they have about like, it's like where they could be sat, or try to talk them through it.
I would also like to ask a follow-up. Since you will be representing the alternate education programs for, along with everyone else, how might you approach making yourself available to those students, and seeking their input?
Um, well, there is like a... Could you repeat the question?
How, how would you seek opinions from the other alternate ed programs that this county has? Or have you thought about it?
I haven't really thought about that, I mean, I would probably do the same thing with the little surveys for students to fill out, but I haven't really thought like too much on that.
Okay. You have done well. And if you would, we will now deliberate, and you would take up.
Nick Ivara can just get a company over to the, to the bayroom while the, while the board deliberates, thanks so much.
Thank you, we'll call you back in a few minutes.
I do. I, I love that, that Natalie has already been exposed to some type of leadership, being involved in ASB. You have to be willing to approach other students, and coordinate, and collaborate, so though it might have not come out in maybe some of her responses, I feel like she has already had a little bit of experience, and can draw from that experience, and be kidding with other students and other places. Also going to be challenging, because this is the first, right? She's going to be the first student trustee that represents our county, so maybe needs assistance in acclimating to what that looks like. I like that she was, she looked ahead, question two, it was talking about specific initiatives, and she said, "I already talked to the teachers, and I can work with them in getting..."
Feel pretty much the same way. I was actually finding something. Does seem challenging to me. All our differences are just realistically irrepresentable. I think the Google Forms idea is, goes to thinking about it. That's often people that that works for. It did too.
Yeah, I want to add onto that, she does seem very eager to grow. She also has some experience, just with education in the past, I think she could come from a unique perspective on a lot of issues, and I think it'd be a very effective addition to the board.
I agree with everything that has been said. I, I like that, you know, she said this would be her first real leadership role, but I think she's also done great leadership at her work, and with ASB, you know, so she definitely should not downplay all those. I mean, being a hostess is a difficult, difficult job, a very, you know, thankless job, that, you know, they have to go through so much. So, I think she knows how to problem solve, how to deal with, with conflict. I, I think she'd be a great addition to the board with her perspective, and I would love to see how she grows over the next year.
I was, I was, I was wondering why she departed, she had no more questions to answer.
I told her, we told her that we were deliberating.
Okay. I do sense that she wants to serve, do a good job. Mend her style.
I'm always terrified, I'm terrified in front of this microphone, that microphone, it's public speaking. And I'm hopeful that our alt-ed personnel maybe can meet with her, and maybe start fleshing out some ideas, at least of inner, having her introduced somehow to all of our programs, and...
This in the audience is Dr. Jen Azan Gonzalez, who is supporting, would be supporting Natalie, and also the amazing team at Oasis.
We really have a blank slate, it's, I do see where it can be challenging, but I know that there are students out there that would really like to have their voices heard, enable that to happen, and our two students can be super effective. Do we do that?
If you're done deliberating, we can bring Natalie back, and you could share some comments with her, and then make a motion. So, Marsha, would you mind getting Nick from the room next door? Oh, they're, oh, they're right outside, thanks. Welcome back, Natalie. The board wanted to share a few words with you, and then they were going to be making a motion on, on your nomination.
Ruben?
Motion to vote for second student trustee position.
Would you like to make any comments about why I think she might be, that she would be appropriate?
Yeah, I think you'd be a very effective addition to our board. I think you're coming from a unique perspective, you're eager to grow, and I think we could definitely have you, and it'd be an effective addition.
I told the other board members that I appreciated that you were honest when you didn't have any answers. That's actually a very important skill to have, did it without it all formative, or that's like a good, plenty of us don't know, so better to acknowledge. Thank you, and I'm impressed with your background.
For being here, you did a great job, being in front of a full panel. Some of the things I brought up during our discussion was your experience, you said you don't have much of the leadership, but you did ASB, another, I won't take away from someone else on our board, but I also thought that you were very proactive, you mentioned something about talking with teachers already, about doing form, you know, Google Forms for question, you know, questionnaires for other students, and that's a very proactive approach for a role that you were just applying for, so I really feel like you're, you already get off to a really great start, and I'm just going to...
Yeah, because I, going off of the leadership, I mean, being a hostess, and having to deal with conflict and conflict resolution, it's a really important skill that you seem to have, and... And, you know, ASB, you know, is a great leadership experience. And yeah, that problem solving with all of that. I just am really eager to see how you grow over the next year. And I think you bring a really important perspective and, you know, your experience is super, super valuable. So, yeah.
Another thing that to me is important about this place is. Not only is this board supportive of the idea of making sure students' voices are heard and acknowledged. But the staff in this office, Office of Education are just phenomenal and they totally care about. And we already got a big nod from the person who's the top person, second to top person in alternative education. She wants to work with you and she's eager to have you as a board member. And so you're going to get the support and you should ask for it if you need it. But definitely I think you're going to find it's a pretty supportive and friendly bunch of people to be in. Certainly is for me.
Andrea.
Well, I, I think you're, I think you've got what it takes to, to do a good communication system between the whole student body population. Submitting Google forms and then presenting or summarizing those, those forms and share them with us. I think that's a very innovative, innovative way to keep track of what students are giving you input. I commend you for that. I think it'll be nice to work with you and have you be part of the team.
There is a motion on the floor by.
Except I'd like to say so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's so.
Apologize.
I, I commend you for stepping forward. At your age and into this position is a huge step into the public world of. Schools and of public action community. And I do believe you will learn a lot. And you, as has been mentioned, the personnel here at the Santa Cruz County Office of Education is extremely supportive. And all you have to do is call Dr. Sabah. And he will get you to the, the right person. And I really, I really appreciate that you are willing to take the time, both of you in your senior year in high school, to do this. And I do think it will benefit you here on out. We need youth very, very badly as a voice in our communities. Thank you.
Well, before you, somebody seconds that motion, I would like to also just thank you Natalie for, for being ready to step up to speak and represent students, not only advocating for yourself, but all students in our alternative education program. You will be, if the board approves you tonight, the first to represent all our alternative educations, over 1,000 students. And so it's a, it's a big responsibility and, and it's, you honor us by, by being ready to step up and take on this challenge. And we're here to help you, support you all the way through.
And you call any one of us and we will gladly talk or address whatever you might. There is. Yes.
Okay. Oh, do you want me to do the first again?
Obviously did.
Maybe you could repeat the motion just so that it's.
Yes.
Timing is.
A motion to vote on filling the second student trustee position.
Do you want to vote approval of?
Yeah, a motion to vote and approval of Natalie Hopkins.
Second. A motion made by Ruben Marcus, second by Rachel Williams. And this would be under item 8.4. And so this is, we have the motion, but it will be a roll call vote and.
Yes. Student trustee Marcus, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
I vote yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams? President Roth?
Yes.
Congratulations. So Natalie, you will be sworn in at the next, will be what we did today with, with Ruben. We're going to, you're going to follow in those steps. We'll also be contacting you and setting up an orientation prior to the next board meeting. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you both on. Historic. Excellent. In and there too. Next, we will be item 9.1. 2025 through 2030. Santa Cruz County Office of Education Strategic Plan. Dr. Sabah?
Yes, thank you so much. We wanted to bring you a draft of the plan that we've been working on and walk you through some of the changes. If you recall, five years ago, we, the board participated in a process to be able to help us guide the, our mission, our vision and the values that we have. And, and so we're, I was going to walk you through an overview of our process and just a current draft of where things are at. We'd love to get your feedback and because we are going to be going back to our manager team with the feedback that we received from you and others and to finalize this plan and bring it back to you for approval at the November board meeting. As you know, the, the strategic plan is really an important process that includes, it really is a very top level document. It helps, it, it tells us our why, but it also tells us, it helps kind of give an overarching description of the kind of work, how we do what we do and why we do what we do. So we've been getting, collecting feedback from staff and from us in September and now October. And this is our, the board presentation to you. We hope to bring back a final draft of the plan in November with your feedback. And so this plan, this overview right now is not going to give you a lot of opportunity to provide feedback. We would appreciate for you to review the actual document, which we will provide you a physical copy, both digitally as well as on paper of the draft. And, and for you to, to continue to provide us. And then you'll be able to give us commentary on the final draft that we bring for you in November. And so looking at our, at the modified vision, you'll see that it's very similar to the one that you approved five years ago. There haven't been a lot of changes, but some of the wording has changed. To create an equitable educational system that fosters growth, opportunities and well-being for all. Is, as our mission statement. Our vision is an impactful educational community where everyone feels they belong and have the resources, relationships and skills to thrive. As we've shared before, that, that concept of belonging has become a central tenet in a lot of our work. And, and we, you'll, you'll see it appear in multiple aspects of, of this modified draft of the plan. Our core values, we decided to develop a concept of bridges. Bridges, if you, we, something I like personally, but it's something that kind of manifests the way we connect people together, the way we could help students connect to their future and their pathways. It's also in our logo. If you see, it's a bridge to the future, to success. And bridges stands for belonging, relationships, innovation, data-informed decision-making, growth mindsets, excellence and sustainability. And of course, with a grant, with a focus on that, those bridges are to equity. So it's a, it's a way of including our values and also ensuring that our, our North Star is equity in education. The, the, there are two parts of the plan and you're going to see a graphic representation of this. We still don't have that to share with you today. But the strategic plan priorities are, there's three priorities and they're very similar to the ones that existed before. The first one is to support safety and wellness. We want to create conditions that foster safety, inclusion, joy and well-being for all learners and the communities that support them. So, so, so safety and wellness, wellness being kind of overarching, thinking of behavioral health, physical health, you know. And of course, students feeling safe and being able to bring their authentic selves to, to, to school. The second priority is empowering equitable achievement and ensuring that all learners have the opportunities, the skills and supports they need to be engaged and successful in their education, their careers and in their communities. And, and so empowering equitable achievement. We're not only wanting all our students to be successful, but we want to make sure that our students from historically marginalized communities are, are also being successful in, in, in our schools and in our communities. And then we also have building sustainable systems that we want to co-create and sustain an educational system in Santa Cruz County that is cohesive, effective and equitable. Sustainability, we think of it, we often think of it as an environmental concept, but we also think of sustainability as from a resources point of view, like financial sustainability, ensuring that we are not only thinking about the short term, but the long term. We're going to continue to be places that have all the resources and the spaces that students need to be successful. There's three approaches or roles that we define, which again are very similar to the ones we've had in the past. We, this, the strategic plan roles are, the first one is to foster collaboration and systems integration. A lot of what we do is bring people together to, and not to assume that we have the answers, but really recognize that together we can come up with solutions. And so a lot of our work is working with our districts, our community members, our nonprofit agencies, our students, our parents and listening. And really making sure that we understand the challenges that we're facing, understand the resources and the, the great opportunities that exist and that we're building those solutions together. The second role that we play is to provide oversight and support to districts and education partners. And an important part of what we do is we provide support with. For example, by professional development to teachers and other educators. We, by training, we provide resources. And in some cases, we play, play an oversight role when it comes. Programs or districts, for example, that may not be, that may, may needing additional support in their systems and procedures. And finally, we provide direct services and supports to learners, families and communities. Serve, as you heard, over 1,000 students in our alternative education programs, over 100 students in our special education program, thousands of families, not only in our schools, but all schools in the county. We continue to expand on the different kinds of supports and services that we, that we offer to, to our, our communities. And so this is a little bit breaking, breaking down a little bit about what the bridges concept looks like. And do we have copies of the? We'll share it and just, if we wouldn't mind passing that out because I'd like to share with you a little bit about what the document is looking like. And I'm going to do that on the screen first and then. And so the actual document that we would love your feedback on. And so looking at our, at the document, I just wanted to share with you a little bit about how it's going to be organized. So it's going to look a lot prettier than this. This is still a rough draft, I recognize. We wanted to get it to you early enough so that you could give us feedback, you could read through it and give us feedback as, as, as we're going through it. And so there's kind of an overview component here about how we're organizing. There's going to be a letter from, written by, by, by me. A lot about the building bridges to equity component. We'll be talking about the County Office of Education providing data, talk a little bit about our planning process and, and the roadmap, which includes those roles and so on, and our path forward. And, and so what we, we're hoping that you, you'll. Take some time to look at some of the data that we've included here. And some of the areas that we focus on, including our student achievement. We actually have some new data that just came out, which I'll be sharing with you and just, and during my superintendent's report, which we might, we're probably going to update this component to incorporate the most, most current data. And, and, and then of course, the presentation of the roles, the, and a little bit of our planning process. And then also one thing that we've asked all our managers to work on is now to take these different components and they're going to be adding the strategies that they're. So if somebody says, for example, we are working on bringing awareness about Cal Kids and the, the college savings accounts, right? So that's a direct service we're offering. But that really connects with empowering equitable achievement because we want all our students to be able to go to school. And that comes in from the direct services part. But you see every little piece, there's going to be, you're going to see how all of these different components combine together. Show us the, show you the work that we're doing. And so that will be ready for you at the next, at the next board meeting. And this is going to look significantly prettier. But we were hoping with this copy in hand and also one we'll send to you digitally, that you could read through it and give us some, some of your thoughts about it. Give us your feedback and, and then we'll be able to incorporate your thoughts. Yes, please. I agree. I, I think that, that, and I also see it as almost like a commitment and a general commitment. And if we're going to make a general commitment, then we need to be able to show the, how, back that up with real action and meaning, right? Because it's easy to say we're going to. Have equitable achievement and then, well, what does that mean? What does that? You feel like as, as we do have more, we, there's not a lot of detail yet in the, in terms of the action part because we haven't added that component yet. We're still working on that. But once we have that in there, I think you'll see a direct connection from some of these broad concepts with specific actions. some of these broad concepts with specific actions.
I would say, changing it from the, sort of the, that pie in the sky and sort of just the cliches is the strategies and the actions, and I think that that's, once you drill down and we're able to see sort of those deliverables, it's, it will, it'll come to realization, like a lot of what I've seen already.
At this point, we're not, this is just an informational, just to give you opportunity to, to kind of hear and also to ask for your feedback. Yes, yeah, that would be, you could provide now, since you're going to be taking action on that, we're going to treat your, your feedback as official correspondence. So I think we're going to treat it a little differently, and that will, if you use a form or you email us, we will, we're going to make sure that that's incorporated, presented in our backup. We're going to be taking action on this. So we want to make sure that that's along the brown. And that is it for my report.
That's the, where you took all of your...
So we actually administered it last year, and so there's 2023 data that's not currently on our data portal, but it will be soon. Most of the districts are now wanting to administer it yearly. It's usually done every other year, and, but most of the districts are now switching. And BASTED has shortened the timeframe to give us the data. So it used to take nine months before we'd actually get the data, now it's down. And so, so we'll be administering it again this year. Incorporating the 2023.
So it, it...
I think it's 2021. It's gotten a little bit better, but many of the components, I would say...
I can see why we want to go to a year.
Thank you for the question.
And how would you like us to respond? Use the forum?
The best way would be to use the forum, but, but please remember that we will be, since we will be tracking it and we will be incorporating it as correspondence, will be included in the back.
Could there any say, stand us, verb, form, attached? Or a description of how, how you'd like? Not seeing, me and by not seeing each other's comments before. Yeah, that's intervention, yes.
Let me think about it, but I don't want that to limit your, your participation, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, so I think that generally speaking, I always think whenever you're going to take action on something, we want to make your participation, because in essence, we're taking this conversation, you're right, if you're not actually seeing the feedback from each other, then it's not really a conversation that's occurring among the majority of the boards, probably would not be.
Feedback one-on-one.
Can't have a conversation, if you start emailing each other about it together, that Yeah. I think that's, and I would say, we'll, we'll, we'll send you a form to be able to provide us some feedback, and, and then we'll make a determination if there's a need for us to publicize your feedback, or... Only difference would be that there would just be some feedback that would be... Thank you.
We will, item nine, 9.2, the Administrator Kickoff Recap, and Dr. Sabah, do you want to introduce?
Yes.
Russell?
Of course. Dr. Marsha Russell is our, our Educational Services Associate Superintendent, is going to talk to us about a very exciting, powerful event that occurred with dozens of leaders from across the county, and so, would you like the, would you like the control?
That would be great. So, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. This is an informational item regarding an event we hold every year that is a great one. The goal of the Administrative Kickoff is really to bring all of the administrators together for, in the county, for some professional development. That includes site and district-level administrators, and it's also an opportunity to have some cross-county networking and connection with all of the administrators at the start of the new school year. Next slide, thank you. So our theme this year was Belonging, Creating Climate for Student and Staff Success, and you can see, you've seen in, in many things this year already, that theme of belonging is something that Dr. Sabah brought forward and that we have included in all of our activities this year, and we're doing that as well as in our events and professional development with administrators and teachers across the county. Our keynote speaker was Ron Clark. He is an award-winning teacher, school founder, and book author, and extremely enthusiastic keynote speaker. You can see his methods are quite revolutionary. And so on the next slide, we have a brief video to share, it's about a minute long, just to give you a sense of who he is and his accomplishments. At the end of the video, when it stops playing, you can click the right arrow or double-click, and it'll go to the next slide. Oh, you're going to pull it straight up there. I have it edited within the slide itself. Yep, perfect. There's sound there.
Ron Clark, who fell into teaching by accident, turned underachievers into high achievers in a Harlem classroom, and in the process, became an award-winning teacher, author, and even the subject of a made-for-TV movie.
You see this? This means that this year is going to be different.
Well, Mr. Clark, he was the only one that believed in me. So that's when I just started, I just started reaching out and everything, and he just really reached, he just really touched my heart, and I liked that.
May I have the envelope, please?
You saw a piece on the news about this school in Harlem, you didn't even know what school it was.
Right.
And you, white boy, got in your car and drove to New York City, going like, "I'm looking for Harlem in that school."
You can do better. It's not acceptable.
Now, Clark's used his book royalties to convert a warehouse in one of Atlanta's poorest neighborhoods into the Ron Clark Academy.
One of the most exciting things about our school is that not only we're affecting the lives of our students here, but we're also inviting educators from all over the country and around the world to come to RCA and to be immersed in our environment and learn about our methods and techniques firsthand. And then they're taking our ideas and strategies back to their classrooms all over the country and around the world to affect the lives of students everywhere.
Go to the next slide. Double-click, go, click one more, yeah, thank you. So these are just some photos, you can see Dr. Sabah opened the evening. That is Ron Clark standing on a table, so he definitely was very active in the room. You can see many people looking and seeing him, and then in the next image, you'll see we, he also did a book signing, so many of our administrators were excited to see his book signing, which is called Move Your Bus, and that book is really all about how you, as school leaders and district leaders, can really build your teams, build community, build belonging, and move your teams forward to support students' educational achievement. And then finally, some feedback and takeaways, you can just click through those, Dr. Sabah, and see what they said, but you can see, one of the ideas that Ron Clark shared is about, rather than trying to change the world and feel like you have to do everything instantly in one day, think about what is the 1% thing I can do, the, the thing that just takes 1% of our effort and energy that will have an outsized impact on students and our environment. And so you can see here several different things, and I especially appreciate the final comment that someone listed there in their evaluation. And then on the next slide, there we go. We did, we do always consider feedback and came up with some adjustments that we might make to next year. Despite it being a Monday evening, we had a waitlist for the event, and we had many, many people extremely excited to be there and said that they felt the time flew by, but we will consider, based on their feedback, shifting it for the future. And finally, just want to say a tremendous thank you. This is a very big event to do. The entire COE team in multiple departments supported us with this effort, and that literally was every single department, you see their superintendent's office, educational services, maintenance and operations, tech plus, and fiscal services. We held the event at the community room at the Simkin Swim Center, and so it required our entire team to be able to bring everything over there, set everything up. Fiscal services supported us with just ensuring that the event occurred, and we had volunteers from every single division that you see here, supporting us and trying to make this event a success, and I think it really shows in both the evaluations as well as the enthusiasm that everyone had for it. And that is it, thank you.
Thanks, Marsha, and thank you for, for leading, leading this, the, this whole process and from start to finish.
It's really important, glad we do it.
You don't have to, well, we don't have a microphone. You said moving the date to a Thursday from a Monday, and what was the time?
It was a Monday evening from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m., and we still had a waitlist, still had a packed house, and still had lots of enthusiasm. A Thursday may just be easier, because we do hold it during the week, and we do hold it after school, because we can't have all of those administrators leaving school during the school day. And they did really like the September date, a few weeks into the school year, after we're settled and want to really kick off the year, after we've gotten past all the logistical things of the beginning of the year. But a Thursday evening is easier for many, because then they just have one more day left of their week for being out late at night until 8:00 or 8:30.
Do, do, do you need a bigger location?
We held this location this year, but we actually likely will return to our typical venue, they just did not have any dates available for us at the times that we needed, so we're actually already researching for this upcoming year, that we hold it back at our traditional location, which has been at Seascape, and they, it holds more people there, yeah.
Okay. Need to have a waiting list.
Exactly, that's how we were, we were able, actually, we held that waiting list till the very end, and we had some people at the last minute who couldn't make it, and so we were able to slot everyone in. So that was pleasing to see, because we were actually able to accommodate every single person on the waitlist.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, moving on to our action items. School Plan for Student Achievement.
Yes.
You get the clicker?
Yeah. So we'd like to introduce Dr. Jennifer Eisen-Gonzalez, who is a director with our alternative education program, and who's been, one who's been helping to write and also champion this, the implementation of our, our plans for student achievement at the, in our alternative programs.
Awesome, thank you for that introduction. Let me just see if I know how to work this.
You gotta push down arrow.
Down arrow.
There is a slow delay, and so you gotta be patient.
Don't go crazy with it, okay. Maybe I'll have you do the slides.
It's actually, it's actually working, it's just that there's a, there's like a five-second delay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, now that we have the tech worked out. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the introduction, and I wanted to start off by saying, first of all, there are two school SIPSAs in this one action item, so we're going to go through the community school, and then we go through the court school, but they are essentially the same. And I did redo our slides and redo, add in some things as well, because we have new board members, and then we also have a new student trustee, so I'm really excited, because I get to do a little bit more explaining and introductions to things that so many of you are very used to after doing this year after year, so that's exciting. But before we begin, and this is tied to our School Plan for Student Achievement, this picture was taken about six hours ago, we had our professional development today at Sequoia Schools, and professional development is part of the School Plan for Student Achievement, and we had a wonderful experience with our team today, and you'll see the bubbles that are there, we partnered with Encompass and Inbal Yasur and her team with a community resiliency model, and it was a wonderful day with our team. And everyone, for this time of year, for October, which is a very kind of challenging time, we were done with the first quarter, we had everyone in good moods, and it also could be due to the fact that we have no school tomorrow as well, so everyone looking forward to a nice little break in October. But I wanted to share this, because I was extremely proud of our team for putting together this event, and this is all of our team, our alternative education, Court and Community School, team members joining in in a circle of appreciation at the end, and it was just a very heartwarming experience, and lots was learned, and I, it was always amazing, and I think I accidentally pushed a pointer, I did not realize that there's a laser pointer on here, so that I need to say, I'll be careful.
So to start us off, as many of you know, we redid our school-wide goals last year. So last year was a huge year of change for our programs. We had our Western Association of Schools and Colleges, our WASC accreditation. We had the beginning of developing a new three-year LCAP cycle. And all of that led to new goals. So our new goals, we are really rooted in wanting our learning and cultivating learners who are curious, conscientious, and confident. And so you will see in our school plans for student achievement and in our LCAP goals that this is woven throughout in the foundation of our programs. And I was also really proud of developing these goals because one thing is we do get a lot of student input. So I was excited in Natalie's presentation of her wanting to do Google Forms because she will be happy that next week in her appointment, we are rolling out our student surveys for this year. We are both rolling out Healthy Kids Survey and our local surveys for students, teachers, and parents. So October is when we kick that off. And so we're gonna start our feedback. And then in February, I'll come back with the LCAP mid-year update. But all of our plans, including the school plan for student achievement as well as LCAP, is devised alongside with our families, with our students, and with our staff. So briefly, what is the school plan for student achievement? The school plan for student achievement is a plan that focuses on how we are spending our title funds. Title funds are federal funds. And schools receive funds from local control funding formula, from title funds, from different grants. There are all these different streams of fundings that come into school. And some of them have plans attached to them, and some of them do not. Title funds are ones that have plans attached to them and a lot of oversight. It's one of the smallest buckets of funding that we have. But it also is one of the buckets that has the most stringent oversight. And we are also currently going through federal program monitoring. So these funds are also being monitored by another entity as well, the California Department of Education. So more about FPM later as well. So our SIPSA funds, as you can see, in total, for both court and community schools are broken up. We have four different title funds that we receive for our court and community school. And we receive them as an LEA. We do not receive them for the court school and for the community school. It is on us locally to divide up the funds to the two programs. So you'll see, if you're reading through the packet, you'll notice, oh, there's different amounts going to different programs. And locally, we decide. As you know, our community school program is much larger than our court school program. So we have more people in our community, working in our community school programs. Thus, a larger amount of funding going to community school. And basically, that's what I just explained. One other distinction that you will notice in the two different plans as being different is the CSI funds, which I'll get into when we get to our court school, is only allocated to our court school program, which is why it's not mentioned in our community school SIPSA. Okay. So one main goal of all of these funding streams coming in is that it's aligned. So as you just saw, we have our school-wide goals. And our funding, we want it to be aligned with our LCAP goals. And so the SIPSA goals mirror the LCAP goals. They need to be in alignment. You wouldn't want to have one plan that is divergent from what you're really trying to do. So that makes things a lot easier because the plans are very much so in alignment. So you have to put in the SIPSA, how is your SIPSA goal related to your LCAP goal? So we have two SIPSA goals. We have five total LCAP goals. The first SIPSA goal, which is related to student academic success, is directly correlated with our LCAP goal number one. And I won't read it directly, word for word, on there. I know you've all read it many times. But that's about cultivating a love of learning, and that's academic achievement. From our title funds, we utilize for classified and certificated staff. And you'll notice that the majority of the funds, aside from contracts, go towards people. And that is something that our school site council has agreed upon. That's another element for the SIPSA's. The SIPSA's is approved and designed with our families and our school site council. And that meeting already happened. That meeting happened in September. So this plan has already been approved by your school community. And our second SIPSA goal is directly linked to our LCAP goal number three. This goal is around community partnerships, student empowerment, and college and career readiness. For our SIPSA goal two, for our community school, we spend our funds towards supporting our foster youth and students in transition team as well as contracts with community partners in our local community that work with our students. And then, so that's just a pause slide because that's for the community school. And then it goes to our court school. So I can roll right into the court school, and then we can do questions at the end, if that's all right with everyone. All right. So you will see our court school mirrors exactly our community school SIPSA with the addition of comprehensive support and improvement. So CSI is a grant that's also through the title funds. And if you qualify for CSI, you get an additional bucket of money. The CSI funds that come into a school must be approved with a plan and included in your LCAP and then also in your SIPSA. So this SIPSA plan for our court school is both approving for the title funds and for this special grant called CSI. The CSI grant is roughly around $160,000. And it's, the funds for the CSI grant are aligned with our SIPSA goal one and our LCAP goal one. And so you can see in here, the one difference between our community school and our court school is we have additional college and career counseling funds going towards our court school. And then our SIPSA goal two for our court school mirrors exactly the same as our community school with the addition of, we also have a contract with Santa Cruz County Probation that is included in here. And that contract supports probation diversion programs that we have. So we have a probation officer who supports kids in our program that might be at risk in being on probation at some point. And so that community partnership, which has been longstanding, is funded through these federal funds. And so that's the, those are the distinctions between the court school and the community school. School plans for student achievement. And now, if you have any questions about either plan, I'd be happy to answer them or discuss them.
I think I have a question. It's more of a clarification. As you mentioned, and we see in the budget numbers, obviously, a lot of money is put towards the personnel. And so my question really was, I was curious as to how many paraprofessionals are you able to cover? And how many students or underschools are gonna be able to be covered? Is it just, or is it sort of, is it additional? Or have them already? You're still recruiting?
Excellent question. And this is one of the things I love about the alignment of the plans. So our goal is that at every single site, for every classroom, we have an instructional assistant to support our students. So sometimes people are in awe of the student-to-teacher ratio or, you know, staff-to-teacher ratio. So that is only possible by utilizing LCFF funding. So we use supplemental and concentration funding to fund the vast majority of our instructional assistants in our classes. But that doesn't cover it all. And so we use the title funds and combine those two to make our goal possible, to have extra support for all of our students. We do, from time to time, have, you know, people resign and vacancies. But we're able to keep that happening because we braid these two funding streams. And so that's why it's in our LCAP, and then it's in the SIPSA. So we're really grateful that we have enough funding currently to make that goal happen. And also furthermore, for that, the majority of it is from the LCAP. So it's roughly $1 million from supplemental and concentration funding. And then this, as you see, is just a few hundred thousand. So it does help, though, because it funds just enough positions.
This, I don't know if this is even appropriate, but why is it the court school where college readiness is applied and not the other?
Well, it's applied to both. So we do, we have college and career counselors in all of our programs. So it's another thing where we have all of our programs. We got an extra little bucket of money, specifically because our court school, which is really small. So our court school is so small that we don't really have many colors on the dashboard. But across the board, and including on our court school, we were, our indicator was very low in college and career readiness. And it's hard to meet that marker for college and career readiness, which is based on your graduating class. You've got to meet it. There's a myriad of ways you can meet it. But you can finish all of the A through G sequence, for example. You can do two semesters of college courses. You can do a CTE whole sequence. And so for our students who move in and out of our programs, that's really hard to do. And then for students who are enrolled in a court school program, as you can imagine, they've even missed more school usually than our students in our community school. So because we had barely any colors on our dashboard and we had the marker very low in the college and career indicator, we used that data and went through that with our, you know, our family group. And it was, well, let's put the money that we got, that we earned for our court school students and put it towards more college and career support. So now we have it more than we've ever had in the past. And the college and career team supports students when they're in our court school. And then additionally, if they move into one of our other programs when they leave our court school. So it is, across the board, we have college and career support. We just now even have extra money to provide additional support for our court school students because we really want them to have exposure and success, particularly, we found, in dual enrollment. That seems to be where, that's where we're working at a lot because we can have students do college courses while they're enrolled in our court school. It was a very appropriate and good question.
And it's probably very individualistic?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So it actually takes--
It's your short time.
Yeah. And it takes a lot of work and a lot of personnel to support students individually in enrolling in college. Dual enrollment, it's a painstakingly long process. And it's also when students transition and move to, following students. So it's individual case management and support, which takes a lot of people.
Okay.
Bill, I appreciate the great work. Pretty familiar for me, so.
Yeah.
We could clarify that it is approval for the SPSA for both court and community schools.
Yeah. So on, excuse me, Agenda Item 10.1, I would approve of-- Not a resolution. Okay. Approval of our school plan for student achievement for both the Santa Cruz--
Thank you.
I'll second.
By Edward. Voice, vote. Ruben.
Yes. I vote yes.
That's the board. Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eisen-Gonzalez. And I always get stuck because we used to call this the Single Plan for Student Achievement. But it changed a few years ago and to the School Plan for Student Achievement. So if those are the same thing, they just changed the way they refer to it.
It sounds like it maybe simplified a little bit. I mean, it's a huge report, but it's--
It's still, yeah. So I mean, it's, you know, that we had hoped with the Local Control Funding Formula that there was gonna be a simplification. But not so much, not so much. But thanks to the great work of Dr. Eisen-Gonzalez and all the folks that support our alternative education program, including our business services team, where you continue to do a great job.
I will continue to push simplification. Maybe we'll be heard. Item 10.2, adopt resolution--
Yes. I believe that Melissa Lopez, our Fiscal Services Director, is gonna be coming to talk to us about the GAN Amendment. This is something that you should be familiar with as we do this every year. So Melissa's gonna tell us what the GAN Amendment is and why we should approve this resolution.
Yes. Members of the board, Dr. Sabah, thank you for having me here for this fun, fun resolution. We do this every year. And I am always so sad to go right after Jen's SIPSA presentation where she always has pictures and fun stuff with bubbles. I would say for five years ago, when I brought you the GAN limit resolution, I said, "The GAN is turning 40." And if I had known that, I would have brought a cake. And I promised that at the next milestone birthday, I would bring cake. So this year, the GAN is turning 45. And there is a chocolate raspberry fudge cake in the back that we will celebrate with when, you know, everybody is ready. So-- Might be pictures of bubbles. I don't know. Okay. So the GAN limit, also known as Proposition 4, was approved back in November of 1979. And it established a limit on the amount of tax money that state and local governments, including school districts, can legally spend. The calculation is adjusted annually for changes in inflation and population. The GAN limit calculations are performed not only at the agency level, but at the state level. Therefore, if an agency is determined to be over their GAN limit, they must adopt a governing board resolution increasing the GAN limit by the amount needed. The agency must then notify the Director of State Department of Finance, who will in turn reduce the state's GAN limit by an equal dollar amount. So for those of you who have not heard about the GAN limit before, this is a calculation done. So envision the dollar amount of our GAN limit as a bucket. And this bucket can hold $50 million, for example. First, you would put in the local property taxes included from the Local Control Funding Formula. Then you would pour in all of the school district's other unrestricted state aid into this bucket. The amount of state aid that fills up the bucket counts towards the school's GAN limit. While the amount of the overflow that the bucket, that falls into the bucket, would then count toward the state's GAN limit. So by reducing the amount of state aid that counts toward the state's GAN limit, this process helps the state to avoid being over their GAN limit. So you have, I believe, after the resolution should be the GAN forms. This comes from our SACs report. It was also included during our unaudited actuals presentation last month. The 2324 appropriations limit is $19,421,646.13. The 2324 inflation, a 4.44%. And a population adjustment of 93.87%. And for the COE ADA, sorry, that was for the COE ADA, and a .13 adjustment for countywide ADA. So for the 2425 fiscal year, the COE's preliminary appropriations limit And that's all for the GAN, unless there are any questions.
Uh, Ruben? We're gonna have a quiz here.
There's no quiz.
No quiz, no. But there is cake, so.
There is cake.
Any--
Thank you.
This will require a roll call, vote.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution of 24-39, the GAN.
Sometimes you have to eat really quick. Okay, since this does require a roll call vote, Veronese say if you would.
Student trustee Marcus?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams? President Roth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Now we are going into item 10.3, adopt resolution 24-40, recognizing National Native American Heritage Month.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So this is a resolution to really highlight and celebrate Native American heritage here locally and of course, across the country. This is about not only recognizing and honoring the first peoples of this nation, but also to think about bringing awareness to many of the, of the tragic inequities and oppressive conditions experienced by Native Americans in our country. It also calls to the preservation of culture of first peoples and Native Americans and, and celebrate their contributions, firstly and in the present. You know, in many cases, we, the land acknowledgement, recognizing land on which we stand and work belong to tribes and the different parts of the Aloney indigenous communities here. And I think that this resolution really is, is a way for us to honor.
Yes, Bruce.
Excuse me, I would just add that this is actually in some ways really central what we're all about here. I strongly support this. I also do appreciate that there's been a little bit of progress. I was sworn in as mayor of Santa Cruz in 1982. I acknowledged that our government was part of occupying land that had a long, long time been inhabited by different peoples and that our government was here partly having taken it away from them. And, because I felt that was important if I'm going to be mayor of this town, all that. And the only response I got in public was, they were saying I should. So anyway, a little bit of progress. And this is, again, I say this is central because I think what the United States of America is all about is promises that we haven't met, opposite of a promise, which led full way of treating. Been pretty good before. Oh, I think that's what society is about today is still.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just one, you mentioned, you know, all of the land acknowledgements that often happen at events and other meetings. And many of them make a point of identifying the Awazwas, speaking, UB tribe along with. Is that something that we can incorporate or do you feel like it's necessary? I know that it takes mention a lot with the tribe in a lot of their recommendations and something that I thought we could consider. I don't think that, that, considered negligible, but something that.
If you'd like to make a motion to approve it with that addition, we'll be sure to incorporate that into the, in the mention where it says Ammutsun, we'll be sure to add the.
Yeah, like maybe in the fifth ambulatory, reambulatory statement.
Represents one particular region of Santa Cruz County, which is why they are featured in the UCSC land acknowledgement. However, there are a number of other tribes in, in Santa Cruz County that the Ammutsun tribal band also represents and advocates for. So the board may want to consider that context.
Thank you. I'd like it to be more generalized, so I would take your direction. So I would make a motion to pass and adopt resolution 2439, oh, I'm sorry. Yep. The 2440, recognizing National Native American Heritage Month resolution as is.
I'll second. I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So a motion made by Rachel Williams, acted by Marcus. And this is a roll call vote, so.
Student trustee Marcus?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President Roth?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on to 10.4, resolution 24-41, recognizing November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month.
Yes, thank you. In the school system, we utilize a McKinney-Vento Act definition for homelessness, which is a broad definition that incorporates a variety of, of different kinds of, of ways that, that young people could experience homelessness, not only, for example, living in a vehicle or living in a shelter or living on, without shelter, but also if families are doubled up. When looking at this broad category, we've continued to see nearly 3,000 students, about 2,000, here, who live in the condition that would, we considered qualifies under McKinney-Vento. And the impact of homelessness on students is dramatically, highly correlated with many measures that of, of a lack of success in our schools, the dropout rate and other kinds of challenges that students experience. And so the importance and the call to action for us to, one, recognize and be aware of the needs of our homeless student population and the need for us to provide services such as the ones provided by the county office of education and all the schools that have homeless coordinators and a variety of other services that we offer, couldn't be more important, especially in a county like ours where, where the cost of living is so high and the challenge, the financial challenges that families experience. We are fortunately seeing a decrease in the numbers of, of young people that are living in doubled up situations. However, we are seeing an increase in the numbers of young people who are living in shelters or living on shelter. And so even though the big number coming, is coming down, some of the more vulnerable living conditions are actually. And it is a reminder that our schools need to continue to be a part of this, this echoes ecosystem of support of students who are experiencing homelessness or, and to support them as much as we can. And this resolution really is about uplifting their experience, their story, and to continue that call to action and support.
Member is national.
I'll second. I'll second. All right. Again, it's a roll call vote, so Veronese say if you would.
Student trustee Marcus?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? Trustee Williams? President Roth?
Yes.
Now, Oz report?
Yes, thank you. Happy to give you a, a update. Just would like to share with you that we were excited to learn that our Youth Leadership Alliance, Youth Led Leadership Alliance, I apologize, there's a word missing there, or as we refer to as WAILA, we were notified that we are receiving the California School Board Association Golden Bell Award. And we will be honored at the next California School Board Association Conference in December. And Andres Ortiz, our community, our student engagement leadership coordinator, Nick Ibarra, who oversees that program, and myself are going to be traveling to, to receive that award. It really is a tribute to the amazing work of not only Andres Ortiz, but a lot of the support staff that advocate for students. And really, it is one of the most joyful aspects of those students and be able to work with them in a variety of, of programs. Ruben Marcus is part of the multi, multilingual leadership group, which is one of the WAILA student leadership groups. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to be able to, to connect and, and support students and really uplift them. And it's an honor to, for our program to be recognized and I'm really grateful to the work that is.
And I just want to extend the invitation to the trustees that are attending the CSBA conference in December. If you would like to attend the award ceremony, to please let me know. I would be happy to buy you a ticket.
If you're planning on going to CSBA, you'd be a part of it. Let, let Veronese know. I wanted to let you know that since our last conversation, we continue to work on the lease for the facility at 119 West Beach. We are still moving forward and we'll bring that back to you at a future date when, once it's, that moves, is something kind of more conclusive has, has occurred. I wanted to share with you that we are partnering with Watsonville Film Festival and also with Pajaro Valley Prevention and Student Assistance to work on a student video documentary project that is inspired by Fentanyl High. We're working with the Empower Watsonville students, who are student leaders from the PVPSA group and, and the Watsonville Film Festival. The students are going to be creating their own stories, their own narrative about their experiences locally in the Pajaro Valley and in Santa Cruz County. We thought this was a great compliment to the work that Ryan Santoro, the student who created Fentanyl High in Los Cados, he's also advising on this part. And we thought this would be another compliment for us to be able to bring awareness about opioids, their kinds of dangerous drugs, and to, to our communities. Or more, we'll be sharing more information about that. I, I believe that we shared with you that we applied for a Prop 47 grant for diversion, which is a grant that would allow us to take what is happening in, in Watsonville PD. They have a Caminos program where any student that is justice involved, they have an opportunity to be able to participate in a variety of supports, activities, community, volunteer hours, family engagement opportunities. And if they participate in these activities, they're able to have their slate clean, wiped clean, meaning that they have no record, all their, all the record of their justice involvement is expunged. And they're able to really get back on track. Patient and success. They have a 96 success rate, 96% success rate with the Caminos program, meaning that 96% of the students who start this diversion program completed. And we've seen it as a model program. And so we wrote a grant called, to take that same program, which only works with Watsonville PD, to make it available for every youth in Santa Cruz County with all law enforcement agencies. Seven million dollars over four years. And Rishi Lal, who is our Director of School Safety, is the one who wrote the grant. And we called it Project Ascend, and I'm not going to remember what the acronym stands for, but it's really about uplifting students and supporting them because we feel like any student in Santa Cruz County, regardless of with agency they interact with, they should have an opportunity to, to make choices to restore, in a restorative way, to be able to, not having a record on the line. And so we're really excited. We're going to be, we're already starting the planning meetings about, for implementation. April 1st is when the program would be implemented. And we are excited about ensuring that, that not only that during the length of this, of this, of the grant, but also a sustainable model that can last. More, more to come on that. I really want to give a huge shout out to Marsha Russell and our Ed Services team for the launching and implement, or design, launch and implementation of our countywide math initiative. Mathematics represents a key area for our youth and a, and it can be, it can be a obstacle or a launching pad. So we want obviously the latter. We want math to be a, that can open up opportunities for students. And this countywide math initiative and working with almost all our districts is something that we're really excited about and getting such great feedback. I actually sat down with Chris Monroe, I didn't tell Marsha this yesterday, and she couldn't stop how powerful this is. Not only is it giving guidance to the teachers and, and administrators about the framework, designed for them to customize based on the needs and strengths, well, to get the support that they need, coaching, they get operative sessions that they're on it. And it's something I, I really believe is going to have a huge impact. I'll be showing you data in just a moment where you can see that math is definitely an area. Speaking of, so the state assessments were recently released to the public about 10 days ago, and we have some work to do. This is a countywide data, so this doesn't break down our data by district because if you break it down even more, you'll see. And so this is one way of looking at the data. This is in the language arts assessment, the CASP assessment. You'll see that we like to, from an equity point of view, we want to be able to compare different groups of students because we don't believe that their being part of a group should limit their success. So this is the percentage of students who tested at, met the standard or were above the standard on the language arts. This was given to students altogether in one report, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth and 11th. So third through eighth and 11th. And so, so you'll notice that students who are English only, which is a term we use for students, don't speak any, always spoken English, they speak English at home. You'll see that about 60%, about before the pandemic, were at the standard. And then you'll see those two yellow bars, which is during the pandemic. And then after the pandemic, you see that there is a drop in most of the categories. And you'll see that those students are at a, in the, in the latest assessment, 55% of our English only standard. We compare that to our English language learners, where it's, that number is 20.9%. So the difference between those two groups is one, one version of the. Looking our, our Latinx students compared to our, oh, I guess it's they're not next to each other, you'll see that our Latinx students that are about 26%. You'll see that we've, haven't really rebounded since the pandemic. And, and compared to white students, it's 63.7%. There's another equity gap. And then looking at our students who qualify for free reduced lunch, that's, those are socioeconomically disadvantaged students versus the students that don't, which are the not socioeconomically disadvantaged students. You'll see 25.6% for those qualified for free reduced lunch, 63.9. And so just a couple of things to point out is if you compare 2018 and 19 to 2024, that gives you a sense of what happened as a result of the pandemic. And then also looking at the two different. One of the things that our, our team, our Ed Services team, and we have Brooke, what the last name? One of the things that our, our team, our Ed Services team, and we have Brooke, what's her last name? Of Hopkins, I was, I want to say Hopkins, but it's Hopkins. Brooke Hopkins, who joined us from previous, working in the Ed Services Department, and Marcia Russell and our other team members, really looking at different ways of making the data, getting as deep, much deeper than this high level. Utilize it. And speaking of math, you'll see that our math scores, there is even more. It's when we look at the two groups. Again, looking at where we were in 2018 and 19, and where we are today, you'll see that we'll have lots of catching up to do. And then looking at the two different groups, our English only students compared to our English only students, really large, or socioeconomically disadvantaged. Students, or Latinx students, students. So we recognize this as math. So this is another, you hear me use this term, call to action? Data is, is, currency is important. Gives us the fuel to... And, yeah, of course. This is high level countywide. Yeah, you'll, you'd be able to go to our data portal. There is a visualization that has this data in districts. And from what I could see, for example, Santa Cruz City School, data didn't drop as much, one example, but you can go in and interact with the... Impact. But generally speaking, I would have to say that mathematics... And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we overemphasize one thing at the expense of something else. Think that we have that difficult challenge, where we have to be focused enough to be able to have an impact in certain areas, global enough to recognize that, have to be able to... College and a career, and that takes really a more... So what I really appreciate about the approach that we're using is we're not telling anybody we have to do. We're talking to the experts in the field who are our educators, who know our students, helping to guide them. Want to add anything?
I think the, one of the things that was especially helpful in the sessions that we had for the last two days is that Miguel has taken lots of feedback we received, and has created a custom data visualization for us in those sessions. And the feedback was so overwhelmingly positive that he's going to use that and apply it to our data portal. And it does allow you to go actually down to the level of the data, where you can actually see which areas of mathematics, for example, students were performing better or worse in. And that's very helpful, because it does vary by school site and grade level. So then schools and districts could make very specific actions that address exactly the need in their area.
And Miguel is Miguel Rocha, who's our Director of Assessments and Data. Analytics, analytics. I know it's DAD, but yeah. All right, and just a, a couple of upcoming events. We have, Brio College is having College and Career Family Night coming up, October 21st. We are doing a parent education night called Clearing the Air, which is about vaping and the dangers of smoking, with our, our team over at Shoreline Middle School. A talking about teen e-bike safety at Mission Hill.
Rising topic.
Rising topic, and one of where we, we are seeing more and more injuries related to e-bikes, and unfortunately, the first death in Santa Cruz County from an e-bike accident. And so definitely something of concern. Wonderful event taking place on November 1st for Dia de los Muertos, and that is where we decorate our, our, our own altar, and also lots of wonderful cultural festivities, music, dancing, and so on. And I'll be co- emcee again, so I'd love to see you there. And then we'll be screening the Fentanyl High movie again, this time at Scotts Valley. And it is, that film is going to be being used in classrooms and in, across, across the counties. We're really excited about its, its application, and it's really starting a lot of conversations from students, parents, and staff. And that is it for my report. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Exciting about the... Okay, did any committees meet? Becca. I'm sorry, I skipped trustee's report. Ruben.
It's all good. I'm, not much to directly report on right now, but I think in the future, I hope to do some surveys, send them out to students all over the county, and then reach out to people, including some other student trustees from other districts. So in upcoming meetings, we'll see how that goes, and I'll let you guys know on any information.
Sandra? ST report?
I, I have, the only thing that I have to, to support for this month was, I have a great interest in, in recognizing the National Native American History or Heritage. And I, I read the book about the movie, based on the movie, Colors of the Flower Moon. And that was, that was not a fun novel to read. Lot of murder in it, a lot of unresolved, unresolved murders. I read it to the very end.
Thought it was better. Movie was quite something.
Not much to report, but I will highlight some measures for local districts in my SD area. So Measure P for SoCal Union Elementary School District, a bond measure for 73 million, you know, to improve their, you know, leaky roofs, improve the quality of education, health, safety, security improvements, and modernize and renovate outdated classrooms. Really important in our community. And Measure N for Live Oak School District, for the authorizing that they could potentially take out 45, up to 45 million in bonds for, for housing for educators in the school district, which, when we're talking about housing affordability and homeless youth, and just the need to increase our housing supply in Santa Cruz County, another really important measure up for votes in just a few weeks, less than a month. Next time we meet, the election will be over. So I'm sure we're all busy with lots of things regarding that, lots of important things going on in our community. Go out and vote.
I'm interested in, in hearing, when, when the results are declared, we'll have a new board, we'll have new people on the board, I'm sure we will. I, I don't know when my term is exactly over, but I did not sign up to run again. I, I, I've been on school boards for 24 years consecutively. This is probably my last meeting, but I enjoyed it. And I don't know what, what will happen next. But in December, when will the new trustees be sworn in?
December.
That's the 19th?
No, December, it can't be, it has to be before December 15th, so I think it's the 12th?
Well, I have it on both, that's why I'm asking. I have it on both the 12th and the 19th, and I have question marks on it.
I thought we moved it to the 12th. But, but Sandra, you generally, so you will definitely, we hope you could come to the November meeting and the December meeting, and then we will, because we'll honor you at the December meeting as we bring in...
Which December meeting am I going to be at, the 12th or the 19th?
Well, because, yeah, in the, in the packet, it does say the 19th still, so...
Okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll check right now.
I'll come on the 19th.
There may be an update. Yes, we'll let you know in just a moment.
I'll save the date for them. Just getting together. Save any further remarks for the 19th. Or the 12th?
I've got it at 12.
Yeah, so there is a requirement that, because of the swearing in part, we can't have a meeting after the 15th. So that's why the 19th is too late. And so we had to select the Thursday prior to December 15th, and that's why we selected December 12th as the date for our December board meeting.
So we, we already voted on, on that and everything last December? Okay.
So we'll, when we get to the dates today, we'll, we'll ask you for another motion, just to make sure that that's...
Okay.
I will continue on with what Arard started. District Pahoa Valley Unified School District has a bond as well, Measure M. And that's to approve $315 million in bonds, help repairs, upgrades, could be used also towards essential student, teacher housing, and expanded technology. The PVSD. Updates between last meeting and this meeting. Attended a few events. One was volunteering for the Rainbow Conference at Watsonville High School, that was cosponsored by the COE. Attended a Food Wet Annual Dinner fundraiser at the Cowal Ranch, which was my first time, I'm very familiar with Food Wet Program. My son attended it probably maybe their third year that they were open, and it definitely had a real positive effect on him. And so it was a privilege to help support and attend that event. See here, a couple of Sundays ago, COE hosted, at least had HBCU here, Morgan State, presenting to a group of students, and it was well attended in a very informative session. And so that was, that was interesting, learned a lot. Just recently attended the Second Harvest Chef's Dinner with Barris and Nick, and that was a lot of fun. So next year, if you have an opportunity, really should sign up. It is an amazing event, not to mention, of course, it was a wonderful event. Locked away with a couple of items, so I'm, I'm that much more happier. And I'm continuing to participate in inside education and learning a lot. And so if any of our trustees hasn't attended it, you know, I'd suggest you doing it for the next, the next one. It's incredibly informative, and you get to meet other folks that are in the community that support COE as well. Let's see here, and I'm looking forward to attending with many of you the Diversity Gala.
I mainly been busy with my professional work on elections. Did go to one very special event that sort of connects with us, which was the 50th anniversary founding of the Health Collective, which eventually became the Health Center. Was very involved with the original Health Collective and with... Realized at that event, there were about 20 women. Really had probably the most formative role in shaping... Not only sort of feminist and gender, but life and how to build community for social change. Totally shaped my life, so very influential. I'm really glad I went. That's all. Oh, I'm sorry, I did have, last time we had come fresh from the board, the county boards, mentioned that I had gone to several sessions related to affordable housing, questions about access for looking at charter education. We learned some very interesting stuff about what some of the... Had some follow-up contacts from... About what we're trying to do here, and obviously around here, we need to... One's really... Educator workforce housing. Asian world. Very incredible examples of work. I'll probably have more. Kind of gratifying that some people have... I want to talk to the... Example that we saw. With... Plonking. Just having it come.
And I did the agenda planning, sorry, microphone, and I got to have coffee with Greg Larson, our incoming new board member. If you haven't, do it. And anyway, so anything else? Yep. Can't believe that it will be after the election. I'm at the point where I think we're going to be in this chaos forever. Probably will be. Anyway, our next regular meeting will be November 21st. It'll be 4 o'clock here.
If we could get a motion to modify the date to December 12th, just to make sure that that's, there's, it's official on the record that the...
I'd like the, the board to move that, to amend our board meeting calendar. Member board meeting from the...
Second.
Who's seconded by that word? I think it's just a... It's a simple vote. Not simple for our student rep. All you out on this.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Appreciate everyone's attendance, and the board adjourned.